Welcome everybody to our Thursday, April 19th, Forest Lake Area Schools School Board Meeting. Uh, Member Clark, please do a roll call.
Member Corcoran?
Here.
Member Morehead?
Here.
Member Peterson?
Present.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Present.
Member Rayfield?
Present.
Member Olson is here.
Alright, are there any items we'd like pulled from the consent agenda?
I moved it licensed.
Oh.
I'd like to recognize someone.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion then to approve one, three-one and three-two?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, three-three, member?
I just want to mention under the resignations and retirements again Ronald Tungseth, who's been here for thirty-three years and he's just done a fabulous job, so one of the ones that we're gonna miss greatly on. So with that, I move. I agree.
Second?
Thank you.
Alright, and it was second? Alright, uh, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you. For old business, four-one, November twenty-eighteen levy referendum discussions, superintendent?
Alright, I can give you a little bit of context and, uh, really, in essence, I'm going back through some information that I shared at the April fifth school board meeting related to this discussion. So, for the sake of just grounding ourselves in some of the previous work that we've done since last November, um, as of, as background and context, uh, remember that, um, our current voter-approved operating referendum currently in place is four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars per student. Generates about three-point-one million dollars a year. That was approved in two thousand and six. We asked for an increase in two thousand and ten. That failed. We asked for a renewal in two thousand and eleven. That was approved. So, in essence, that figure of four-sixty-two, as it sits, is eleven years old. We have not had an increase since two thousand and six. In last November, we had a referendum question for a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase to that four-sixty-two number. And that, that question failed, as we know, forty-three percent to fifty-seven percent. Following that, that election, the board asked that we engage the community and study what might have taken place with respect to that question and the election overall. We did three things. The first thing we did is a post-election survey. And Morris Leatherman Company did that survey. They surveyed seven-hundred-and-fifty residents of our school district. Two-hundred-and-fifty parents, two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty parents who voted, two-hundred-and-fifty parents who did not vote, and two-hundred-and-fifty community members who do not have students in our schools. And a few highlights from that survey is, uh, are listed there. Thirty-five percent of the households in our districts actually have students in our schools. Six percent of the households have students, but they do not attend our schools. They attend, um, neighboring schools, homeschool, private schools or charters within our district. Fifty-eight percent of the households do not have school-aged children at home. Most voted on election day rather than early voting. An interesting tidbit there is our non-parents voted at a, utilized early voting at a higher rate than our parents did. I found that interesting. Overall turnout was thirty percent throughout our community with a parent turnout of forty-one percent. Parents supported both questions at, uh, when you, there were two questions. Seventy-eight percent of the parents supported the levy, went, of the parents who voted. That's very encouraging. That's a huge level of support amongst our parents. The challenge is getting our forty-one percent to a higher level. Our non-parents supported the levy at forty-seven percent. That poses a challenge for us. We heard that taxes were a major consideration, especially the tax on the two thousand and fifteen bond referendum. The other thing, the next activity we undertook and efforts we, we put in place were a series of community conversations. We went out to the various communities throughout the district and held community conversations at the Linwood Community Center, the Scandia Community Center, Wyandotte Lake City Hall, Columbus City Hall, Wyoming's at Split Rocks, and the American Legion in Forest Lake. You'll notice that none of these community conversations were actually in our schools. We went out to the community, so to speak, and engaged and invited the community to come and have a conversation with us about the referendum. We had close to two-hundred community members come to those conversations. We also assembled a school funding task force of twenty community members. And I can tell you that the community was represented by, rep, by members of all of our different communities that make up our school district. There were people who didn't vote because they told us, "I didn't know there was an election." There were people who did vote and they voted no for various reasons, and there were people who voted yes. We had a really good cross-section of members of our community on this task force. We spent three nights with this group, going deep into our funding sources for the district. Another night, going deep into how we spend those dollars throughout our operation. And the third night was an open conversation around key takeaways and asking each of the twenty members to provide some guidance from their perspective for the school board with respect to setting a referendum question for a future date. And obviously, the next future date would be next November. And there was a lot of feedback provided through, uh, the community members and Jennifer Bredel shared those feet, that, a number of those feedback points from the task force at our April fifth school board meeting. The key takeaways from that group is they were pretty clear that we needed one question, not two. Zero in on the operating levy and not confuse it with the bond question. And while we were out for seven-fifty, across the board, the committee recommended an increase between eight-hundred and actually thirteen-hundred dollars, with the range being around nine, between eight and a thousand, somewhere around nine-fifty to ninety. That was their guidance. So, that's information for U.S. board members to consider as we continue this discussion.
See?
Yes?
Just a question, uh, I can't remember when she was giving her report. Was that unanimous decide, decision or was that part of the group, um, came up with the amounts? Was that signed off by all of them or was it just?
It was, it represented a range. There were, as we went around the table, somewhere at, um, nine-hundred, somewhere at a thousand, somewhere twelve-hundred, somewhere thirteen-hundred. So, this represents kind of the, the cluster of the range, but it was all the way up to thirteen-hundred for a couple of the folks at the table. And that would be a per-student, per-pupil increase. I do have, the final slide is, um, another display of the seven spending priorities U.S. of school board adapted for the November two thousand and seventeen referendum. Again, as a, as a way to focus on where would those dollars be spent should we be successful with the operating referendum. Just to reiterate them, reduce class size averages with an emphasis on elementary, early elementary grades. Restore and enhance classroom instructional resources that were reduced or eliminated through previous budget reductions. Make efforts to attract and retain the best teachers and staff. Enhance supports for struggling students. Expand gifted and accelerated learning opportunities for students. Retain and enhance educational opportunities for students, including music programs, career and technical programs, elective course opportunities, and college-level courses for high school students. And lastly, establish financial stability in an effort to avoid future budget reductions.
Alright, so last time we talked, we discussed this, uh, topic, we, um, answered a few questions and I, I think we all pretty much agreed that we wanted to go out, we felt it was really important that we go out. Uh, we felt it was important to have just the levy on the ballot, uh, that we would go out November sixth. November eighth?
Yes.
Yep. November sixth. And, um, I believe I remember it right that we agreed on eight years as the amount of time to go out. Alright, and, um, we reaffirmed that, uh, the priorities that we see up here were the ones we still felt strongly about and that that was the way we, we want the money spent. And, uh, which brings us to the last question we had, which was how much? And it's not so much that we were in disagreement, but we all wanted time to kind of hear what other people had to say, think about it, and then come back tonight. Uh, kind of come to some consensus tonight on the amount and, uh, move forward with authorizing a levy. Sound like a good recap? Alright, so why don't we, um, discuss our dollar amount and if we can kind of come to some consensus, then, uh, put a motion on the table. Alright, does anybody want to start?
I'll start. So, you know, I know the last meeting was emotional and we, you know, were feeling it. We all didn't like what we had to do, but we had to do it. Um, and we kind of tossed some numbers out, but I was glad that we hit the timeout button and, you know, just kind of took a step back to, you know, think about it. So, my number, I'm at eight-twenty-five. That's a ten percent increase from where it was, um, last November. You know, that, um, is justified because we just had to make two million dollars in cuts, so a slight increase kind of tries to make that back up. And, you know, it's within the guidance of our task force. It's within the guidance of Morris Leatherman, who provided the survey for us, and those guys know what they're talking about. You know, they've been doing this for thirty-plus years and, you know, that they, they kind of know this area, they know the game, and, you know, if you, if you push it too, too high, I mean, we need thirteen-hundred. No one would disagree with that, but, you know, we're not gonna get that. So, uh, you know, I think that that's a realistic target, um, and it helps, you know, push some of these spending priorities, um, you know, into, into reality, so that's, that's the number I'm at currently.
I am completely on board with Luke, um, based on his, uh, what the task force has recommended. That's why they were created. That was their job to give us direction. And it's conservative from what they've recommended, which is what we do as a board. We're always conservative, realistic with this community, so I would highly support eight-twenty-five.
A conservative sitting on this end of the board is looking to get something. And last time in the discussion was from Morris, that five-hundred would be pretty, pretty simple, maybe. Seven-fifty was a gift. Thousand was probably not. And so while they have been at that for a long time, many times, they have a pulse, but they don't have the answer. And with this one, they said the ten percent down or ten percent up would pretty much have the same effect. I think if I'm repeating that correctly is what he had said. I don't, I understand why the task force would have those numbers, because anytime you sit down and understand how it is we spend and what it is that we get, it's pretty clear to say that we don't have enough and we need more. So, I was right around eight-hundred. It's an easy number for me to talk about. It's still going up from what it was. And it's kind of a double talk. I know there was another correspondent that we got where property values have gone up and so really the eight-twenty-five would be the same as the seven-fifty would have been. And I just been in this long enough to know, and I tell it on the street, they don't get that and they don't like the fact that I'm arguing with, you know, with, it's an increase. Why I need to say it's an increase and not try to make it sound like it's really not because you're gonna get more money. I mean, it's just, it's just how people hear it. I'm glad that we're as close as we are, because I was really afraid my, uh, correspondent across the road here would have been really high. So, you know, I will listen to the rest and I know that, um, we have to be in agreement on this. But I'm just thinking to be able to say there's a fifty-dollar increase this time because of the fact that we had to cut, um, would be an easy one for me to go out and talk about.
Well, I can go next and I do agree with Member Morehead that, that part about the ten percent, explaining that away does get very convoluted with, with neighbors and constituents. But I also think that we don't want history to repeat itself and be in this situation with this long drought, with nothing passing for this long, really suffer through all these cuts. So I think if we want to be where we need to be and to, like Member Olson said, kind of honor the work and the hard work that the task force did. And while I do agree that when you look at that financial portrait that we have and those dire straits, you do go, "Oh, we need the pie in the sky." But I think they did their due diligence and I was at some of those meetings, they were being pretty pragmatic about everything. So, I just think that we need to really close that gap and not have to come back for a while. And to get to that point, I think it's eight-twenty-five is the number I landed on. So, um, I could go higher. I think that the task force left that in there because they know we really do need to get to that amount. And we are talking eight years. That's a long time. So, I'm at the eight-twenty-five, so I'm in agreement with Member Olson and Member Odegaard. And I think that Morris Leatherman, they know our district. They've been very consistent and, you know, Member Odegaard stated that, yeah, they've been doing this a long time. So I guess for me, the trust factor is there with Morris Leatherman's, um, information too, so.
I thought it was fault people didn't come out to vote, but I mean, they were wrong last time. Or not really wrong, but they were.
Well, I'd love to say nine-hundred just to watch the reaction.
I know. I said it earlier. I did say nine-hundred earlier.
But I will concur with several of the other board members. Um, I, I'm at eight and a quarter. Uh, as much as I know that, you know, more would clearly do more, right? We would be in a better position. And as much as I understand the increase in property values, we've also watched them decrease, so that's really, you know, when you take that into context on an eight-year, over eight years, we don't know, we can't see the future. If we could, well, we know, have some different ideas, but, uh, I think eight and a quarter is, is probably just getting by, um, and not really restoring. I mean, we made some pretty painful cuts and there's still some to come yet this year and, and, uh, eight and a quarter's not gonna undo a lot of that. It's just going to make us not be back doing that again next year and the year after and the year after that. And maybe, you know, do some of the things we talked about up there, but it's certainly not gonna undo some of the things that we're looking at later for next month. So, I, I can't see how we can go lower than that.
Yeah, I think, um, I went to a couple of task force meetings and there was a, somebody in the, in the group who was, uh, um, an engineer and, and, uh, he came in very doubtful about, um, our district, you know, and, and concerned that we weren't spending our money like, uh, you know, with a lot of, uh, ethics that a, uh, business would, you know? And, um, by the end of it, by the end of the task force where we talked about where our school works and, uh, things like, you know, one, one dean has a thousand, is it a thousand students they're responsible for?
Four-fifty.
Yeah, four-fifty. Seeing numbers like that, uh, by the end of that, he came up with a number that was around thirteen-hundred, right? And, uh, very smart guy, um, you know, and that's always the, the hard part, you know, is that when people, uh, have their own lives to live and they're not familiar with how the school actually manages their money and, and how we get by on a shoestring and, and the, you know, the way we spend our money, uh, you know, when they're not familiar with that, they're like, concerned that we're not doing it right, but then when they're able to come in and, uh, take a look at it, their mind changes. And, um, that person, super nice guy, that, you know, when he, after he had seen the reality of what we're dealing with, you know, looking at thirteen-hundred, um, yeah, and that's the, that's the kind of thing I struggle with. I, what, the, you know, seven-fifty is probably the safest number, uh, but I just have a, a problem that I know that the legislature has gone to a very unpredictable way of operating. And that where I used to kind of feel like I could guess where they were gonna land and I could come in close, lately, they've always come in low. They've always come in low and so that when we're passing these levies and levies are being passed all over the state, they can easily get eaten up in a very short amount of time by the legislature just deciding they want to do tax cuts that year, right? And, you know, we know that, what, eight, ten years ago, the, they changed a law so that inflation, which has a real effect on us, was taken out of the calculation for how they estimate budget, uh, surpluses. So, it looks like they've got a big budget surplus because they're not calculating inflation to the schools. And so then they're like, "Look, we got all this money, let's give a tax cut or let's do this, let's do that." When in fact, they've collected the money, inflationary in, in nature, that should be going to the school. So, my bottom line is, is that seven-fifty or eight-hundred, I feel is safer from, uh, an election standpoint, but I also feel like a number like eight-twenty-five is still very much doable, because I think there's been an attitude change in this district. I feel it's still very doable and at the same time, it's safer from a, from a fiscal standpoint, right? Is that it leaves us in a better place. Our fund balance is too low, um, you know, and so it pulls some of that predictability out. The other thing I would say is that the difference, um, let's say you've got a medium-priced home, what, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand? That's a buck that, between the seven-fifty and, nobody's calling for seven-fifty here, but the difference between seven-fifty and eight-twenty-five is a buck fifty-seven a month, right? So it's not, it doesn't feel like it's a lot, um, a lot of cash difference. Member Morehead, I know what you're thinking, it's what I'm thinking. Numbers like that don't make a difference. It's what people feel oftentimes, you know? So. So that's my two cents. I, I, I'm perfectly happy with eight-twenty-five. I would, I think we need more. I could, I could go lower, but I think eight-twenty-five is as low as I could go and feel like we're, uh, being responsible to the fiscal uncertainties involved, if, if that makes sense, so, I don't know. Further discussion?
And I just, I haven't said anything yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so, I agree with eight-twenty-five, but to, to be, readdress the eight years, do you think we're gonna be cutting again in six years, again? Because not enough. That is my concern, on the eight-year term. I mean, I don't want to go back again, again either. So that's where the, I think we could maybe look at that. I mean, I think eight years is a nice number, because I don't, you know, then it, it gives us enough time, but also, we don't know what the future holds, like you said. I mean, we could be in the same position in four years or five years, again. And then what? And then those, you know what I mean? So, I don't know, we should look at that or not, but I, I came into this tonight, I was thinking nine-hundred, because I just don't want to be doing that again, right? You know? I don't want to go backwards. And I feel like that's something to think about. So, I, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
So you're saying that you're looking at a larger number because of the length of the bond?
Well, no, I mean.
I'm levy, I'm sorry.
I think if we maybe change it to maybe six years.
Change the length?
Instead of eight? I'm just thinking, we're gonna, this is what happened, we went eleven years. And when did we start cutting with that little amount? Was it at five years or, how many years was it?
I would be unwilling to go under eight years personally, just because running levy stinks.
Oh, it does. I know it does, but I also don't want to be.
And you do six years. In three, you're gonna have to start going out again. You got a three-year window then where you don't do anything.
But I, I agree with Member Corcoran. I mean, are we gonna have history repeating itself?
I know, I'm worried.
I mean, I do worry about that and just going through this long.
Eight-twenty-five isn't enough for eight years.
Oh, it isn't. I know.
It's a stepping stone.
It is definitely a stepping stone.
And in four to five years, you go again. Because in this district, they've been skating by for a long time with extremely low taxes relative to the school district.
It's more of a, it's a gradual change, what you're thinking.
I think Member Morehead had enough first.
Okay, well, that's fine. That's all right. She's still thinking. Go ahead. So, that was my only concern.
Yeah, I'll, just to finish my point, that, I mean, you know, let's assume the rest kind of holds steady, that the legislature provides little and no help, our costs keep going up. Eight-twenty-five will be gone in six, maybe seven years. That's a couple, two to three contracts worth, and then we'll be back right where you're sitting now, where it's like, okay, we're gonna start cutting again. But this can't, eight-twenty, that's not the end game. That's the next step. And then in four to five years, it's another step, you know, to bring it back to being able to do, we're not gonna be able to do all these things with eight-twenty-five. There's no way. But we'll be able to do some of them.
But if you're saying four or five years and Julie's saying six, going down from eight to six, it's kind of.
But you're gonna have to go back.
Four years.
You're gonna have to go back in three to, as your next stepping stone, as opposed to going back in five, six.
Yeah, I think that the, the longer levy provides you a foundation on which, so that if you see that, oh-oh, now the state's been chintzy with us, um, we need to go out again, you're not facing losing that whole amount. That whole amount stays in place while you've got the time.
So it's a security. It's a security factor.
Yeah, or otherwise, um, I know, the way we used to be, and Member Morehead can talk about this too, is that we got something passed and then one-year safety and then we're right back at it.
Right.
Again, it was not a good way to, and it also meant that that was all we were about, is running levies all the time, you know?
Just non-stop. I would totally, I mean, we need a thousand. Can we all agree to go to a thousand tonight? No. But we have to start somewhere with this community. We have to show them what we can do with this increase. And it puts us at about, what, twelve-eighty-seven? Again, middle. We're only shooting for middle, but we don't want to be bottom anymore. So we gotta bring it up a little bit and we gotta start somewhere.
So, Member Corcoran, were you comfortable with eight-twenty-five because you said nine-hundred?
No, I think that'd be fine. I mean, that's, you all agree, that's fine. Maybe like I say, we, it'd be nice to have more, because we're not gonna be able to add back. We're just gonna have to stay with what we have. And maybe add, you know, I mean, I don't know, we could add back or not, but just to try to keep our class sizes, you know, reasonable and hopefully have some programs and not have to reduce our programs anymore, so.
I would add to the discussion that eight-twenty-five, eight-hundred, eight-twenty-five brings in five-point-two roughly million dollars a year for each of those terms. If we assume two percent annually from the state, and I hear what Member Rayfield's saying, that, that's not a guarantee.
Right.
But with inflationary increases, two, three percent from the state and eight-hundred, eight and a quarter, will give us, will move us significantly forward in terms of financial stability. And we'll, we'll be able to do significant work in these areas with that. Not the extent that we could if we were at a thousand or thirteen-hundred for sure, but eight and a quarter will allow us to do quite a bit of work in these areas.
I'm so glad you said that, because I was sitting here thinking, I'm gonna go out and sell something and you people are all telling me it's not gonna even work. We told them seven-fifty was gonna work. Were we lying then? We were gonna do what we could with seven-fifty. We were gonna do a lot of those. We were going to do a lot of those things that are up there.
Yeah.
And now, a year later, we're going to raise it, and, you know, if it's going to be eight twenty-five, it can get me there, but let's not act like that's nothing. That's a huge difference for our district, and I'm glad to hear Superintendent Massey saying that, that we can do a lot of good. So I was just getting really down with the information going around here that go every year, we're going to have to come back, this isn't enough, and then I have to go out and try and convince people to do it? No. So I think if we go eight twenty-five, we have to all get on board, that that is a really good shot in the arm for us, and that will really propel us into a place we haven't been for a long time, maybe never. But we have to, you know, we have to be saying that if the people would agree to eight twenty-five, that's a good deal, and we thank them for that, and we're going to do the best we can to get all of this stuff done. But that's all I was thinking.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think that it's easy to get down because we're in a time of cuts, and, yeah, I think you're right that the reason we're fighting for this and the reason we all fought like crazy to get it to pass last time because it puts us in a good place. Yeah.
Right.
So I did hear, though, that you said you could get on board at eight twenty-five. I heard that somewhere in there.
She hinted at it.
Given that.
I remember twice in a row now I didn't sign on this. And so we all better be out there, and I think we do have more people on board this time because they realized it lost. I don't think a lot of people thought, maybe they'll work harder, but we have to move forward. And so if the whole board is going to say eight twenty-five, I'll certainly fight to get that.
Okay. Well, I'm Member Tyson. Move that we set a referendum question on the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen election that will increase the Forest Lake area school district's voter-approved operating levy by eight hundred and twenty-five dollars per adjusted pupil unit for a term of eight years.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I'd like to thank everybody for, I just think we had a really nice discussion on this, and I want to thank the administration for all the work they did in putting together the listening sessions and working through those. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, but I think it was really important to hear what people's thoughts were on the on the levy and before we made a vote on it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank the two hundred community members that came up with the input. It was really nice to see that number of people and get that much input on something that we're, you know, also passionate about at this table. We don't always get the the input from the community, so it was nice of them to come out.
Yep, very much. Great. If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Morehead? Uh? Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye, and Member Corcoran?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. And that's all we have. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion, all of them say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, everyone.